Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the June 9th Planning Board meeting. It is seven o'clock. Present tonight, we have Guy Horn, member; Bill LaPage, member; Steve Witrober, clerk of the board; Richard Clark, vice chairman; myself, Daniel Edmiston, chairman; and Bill Scanlon, our acting town planner, excuse me. You're not acting anymore, right?
Still acting.
Still acting, alright. First item on the agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes for May 12th and May 24th. Can we take these all as one motion, or you wanted to divide them up, guys?
Expediency, Mr. Chairman. Maybe we could take them both together, unless there were any objections or questions regarding...
Any discussion, anything that anybody wants to comment on? Alright, looking for a motion to act on the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the minutes of May 12th and May 24th.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Next item. We have an A&R plan. Roger and Joanne Lacourse, 93 Old Southbridge Road, assesses map 229, Lot 32. Good evening.
Would you like me to hand out the plans for you, or...
Yeah. You gotta sign the darn things in. He doesn't sign these. Get those started, we need two copies. Go ahead, Steve. Evening.
Good evening. My name is Steve Peichel. I'm with Burton Engineering, the senior project manager, representing the applicant Roger and Joanne Lacourse. What we are proposing here is a four-lot split with a common drive for two lots, onto Lot 1 and 2, and then a drive that would be accessing Lot 3 from Old Southbridge Road. We have received comments from Mr. Scanlon today at 2:43, and we are open to any and all discussion. The one thing that I would just point out, in terms of the questions about the right-of-way in favor of Kugler, there is an existing right-of-way there, so if it would please the board, I just wanted to bring that point to you. So, we're using that existing right-of-way to create the drive from Old Southbridge Road.
Existing right-of-way to Lot 3?
And as far as creating a right-of-way to lots 1 and 2, we do see the comments from Fire and Safety and TPW. The applicant is willing to make the right-of-way larger to whatever width that the board would see fit. If that is a two-foot shoulder on each side, we can certainly do that, and then recreate and make the appropriate edits to the plan in order to make the right-of-way compliant with the appropriate section of regulations.
Mr. Chairman, question?
Yes, the gentleman. In Lot 4, it's noted proposed 18-foot common drive for proposed lots 2 and 3.
Mm-hmm.
I thought it was going to be 1 and 2.
Yeah, my apologies. That's the mistake. You're looking at the profile, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that should be corrected, and Bill actually made that point. So, yes, you are corrected. That drive would be accessing lots 1 and 2.
Everybody see that?
Yep.
Is that clear?
Just to meet, yep.
Okay. Also, the other thing that I just wanted to point out, there's a question from the fire chief about creating an area as a turnaround. What we could do as a proposal, and this is when, of course, the lots are purchased, we could grade out a hammerhead in opposition. We would prefer not to use a cul-de-sac at the end of the lots, but that's not really before the board right now. Really, the A&R plan is before the board. We're not proposing to sell any of the lots as yet, so any grading with the individual lots would be subject to your approval, of course.
So, we have a complete application?
Yes.
Yep, fees paid, no waivers?
No, not asking for any waivers.
No waivers to be asked for. Alright. Did I miss the email that had all the comments in it, from everybody?
I only sent it to Steve this afternoon with a couple of comments.
Okay, but there's a fire, a letter from Fire Safety, a letter from DPW, a letter from the fire chief.
Those were just conversations I had with the highway superintendent.
Okay.
There was a provision in the zoning bylaw that says you can't put a driveway on the lot line. This is shown here on the lot line, so I think my comment to Steve was that he should try to move that away from the lot line so that it satisfies the zoning bylaw.
And once the planning board accepts this as an A&R plan, then our responsibility basically ends there, correct?
That's correct.
So, to make sure that any of the comments from any of these other departments are adhered to, that's out of our jurisdiction, then? Did that inform the building commissioner?
I would suggest that you could go ahead and approve this plan if you wish, and then you could authorize me to sign it when I get a revised plan in from Steve that has the proper corrections made.
Okay.
Because your jurisdiction really just is limited to the division of the land.
Correct.
Not the driveways, per se.
Alright.
I hate to record a plan that wouldn't be the final layout. I'd rather see that corrected before it gets recorded.
Understood. And then, the frontage for lots 1, 2, and 3 are on Southbridge Road, but the access is from the Old Southbridge Road, correct?
Yes, sir.
Alright. And that's okay?
Yes.
These aren't considered back lots then, or anything?
No.
Through the chair, can we ask what's happening with Lot 4? It's just staying the same?
Yes, sir. Mr. Lacourse is just breaking that out for his own private residence, so any, of course, let's say, for example, you do approve with conditions to expand the common drive to lots 1 and 2. Mr. Lacourse is willing to expand it four feet, or whatever distance you feel would be appropriate to provide for a shoulder.
Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I thought that there was a revision to the subdivision regulations that required that the common driveway had to come in from the same road as where the frontage for the lots was.
I just asked...
It wasn't in the subdivision control art, it's in the zoning bylaw. It was put in, I forgot the dates now, but I just recently looked that up because we had that on another plan, but it was reversed.
Oh, it was?
It was reversed, I believe, in 2017.
Okay.
At the request of the building inspector.
Okay.
Because it was confusing.
Okay, alright, so that was my only concern.
No other questions? And there's no issues with the steepness of the driveway leading to lots 1 and 2?
I believe it conforms to the driveway standards.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, there's no further questions? Right, can I get a motion from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a motion that we approve the A&R plan, subject to the changes that have been mentioned, and to be finally reviewed by the town planner, and subject to his signature.
Alright, I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. For the discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, thank you for your time.
Chairman of the board. Bill, I'll be getting those revised plans to you within the week.
So, we don't have to sign anything right now? We wait till we get the revised plans, then we can go for signatures, right?
I can sign, hopefully.
Alright. Take care of that. Alright, we're four minutes ahead of schedule.
Steve, would you sign in?
You bet. Bill, I can take those my lines for you, and I'll take care of them.
Would you guys have signed that 20:40? And then, this one for the 12? Is there anything that we can take care of in three and a half minutes, Bill?
Did you want to look at the Pilkton Estates issue of the covenant extensions?
I think we can do that, should be pretty quick, correct?
Okay.
So, which one, give us a brief overview, Bill? What we're looking for, and then we'll just go from there?
So...
Thank you.
Pilkton Estates, as you know, is still under construction, and Mr. Sekera is ready to begin work on the final phase, which would continue the road where it currently ends, you know, on both ends, and finish it up. And in order to do that, he needs to get, you know, construction financing. And I spoke with his financer during the week, who said that the covenant extensions have expired for that plan, so he didn't feel comfortable providing a construction loan for a project which appears to no longer be in effect. So, it was my feeling that the board intends to have the developer complete that project, so I prepared a new covenant extension form and a subdivision extension form for your approval. So, that would then legal that the project is still active and moving forward, and would provide assurance to the member that, you know, they could go ahead and provide financing for that project.
Those documents were all emailed to us earlier this week.
Yes. So, the question is how long you want to provide the extension for. Mr. Sekera, as you know, hasn't moved very quickly on this, so I doubt he could finish it within a year, but if you could do it for a year, and then have him come back for another extension, or he could go for two years, and hopefully he would have it completed by that time.
Support thing, 1, 2?
Just a question, if I may. Mr. Chairman, where do we stand in terms of any escrow monies here?
The other phases have adequate security in place.
Okay.
Based on the completion...
If we're talking adding a couple of years here, obviously, is an inflation factor that somehow impacts that, or is not the case?
We don't have, at this point, we're not releasing these lots of covenant. We're just extending the covenant. So, when he wants to get lot releases, he'll have to come in with a new financial security for that remaining phase.
What was the original completion date, or was there one that existed at some point in the past?
Well, they're always given for two years, and then they've been extended a number of times.
Right. I mean, this originally dated back to February 22nd of 2006, so...
Right.
We're going into the decades again.
So, if you look at, see what tab those are in, do you recall?
They're under C.
So, the third sheet there was the latest extension that I could find, and so it went to December 31 of 2018. But you'll notice that there were only two planning board signatures on it, which, and you need three for it to be valid, so there'd be a question of whether this was a valid extension, and it was never recorded, but I did find it in the files. So, take that for what it's worth.
Mr. Chairman, I question through the chair, can you extend a covenant that has already expired?
I mean, that's a good question. I don't see why not. What would happen if you didn't? Then this project would be dead, and they wouldn't be able to finish it.
No, I'm not questioning, I'm not questioning the logic in doing it.
Right.
I'm just wondering whether or not legally it doesn't hold up.
You know, I think it would, if it's the decision of the board to do so, someone would have to challenge it, go to court.
The worst thing would be it would be nullified, right?
Yeah, I mean, I can see this as simply a continuation. We're correcting a mistake made by others in whatever year it was, 2000 whatever.
I remember we had a discussion about this, that I think there's actually some other covenants that have expired, because...
Correct, and we're trying to catch up on those as well.
Developers aren't even aware, and all of a sudden that time comes and passes.
Yep.
So, my next question would be, what's the other timetable that you're dealing with, Tony, regarding the ZBA, those lot sizes?
We're meeting on July 1st again. We're supposed to, yep, public hearing on the 6th, it was the 6th this month, no, the 3rd this month, but we didn't have enough time to notify the neighbors and advertise, so we move it up, we move it to the next month.
And if it goes the way that you're hoping it will go, you expect to get, is it 12 more months?
12 more months.
12 more months.
Yep.
So, at a minimum, we need to give him 12 months plus another month before the meeting happens.
How many houses are we talking in the next phase?
Nine more.
Nine more. So, you're talking five, six houses a year, you're in the second year anyway?
Yeah, so...
So, I think it makes sense for two years.
Two years, reasonable.
Do I get a motion?
Chairman, I would make a motion, and I'm not sure of the wording on this one, that we modify the existing covenant to extend it another two years to an end date of, what are we looking at, today's date, 2023?
I would say 2030, maybe, just to make it...
2030 of 2023.
23.
Do you have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh, no, sorry.
You and I?
I'm on a delay here.
Alright.
I have the original here that Mr. Sekera signed, so I'll pass this around.
Okay, so with the delay, we have a unanimous decision?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Late ballot, a mail-in...
Alright, so we didn't make our three and a half minutes?
Tony, I'll give you the original. You'll have to get it recorded.
Okay. Do I pick it up tomorrow, or you have to take it?
They're signing it now. Do you want to come back tomorrow, or?
I'll take it, I'll...
Okay.
Yeah.
There's two places.
Extended, yeah.
Alright, so the assumed three and a half minutes turned into six and a half, it is now 7:18, and we're going to continue the discussion of Fish Road preliminary plan and possible vote. Hello again?
Hello.
2 and 2, same day.
6, 9, 8, 9.
Are everyone ready?
Okay. Good evening. My name is Peter Lavoy. I work with Summit Engineering. We were here at the last meeting, and there were some concerns that had come up, so I have made changes to the plan. I have some 11-by-17s of the lodge plan, if you would like, I can hand them out.
Sure.
If that's alright.
Have you revised?
Yep, that's the same one. Okay, so the changes I made to the plan, I added the sidewalk around the new section, basically starting at the property line here, there'd be a handicap ramp coming around, wrapping around, and then coming to the property line right there, and there'd be a ramp right across, so they could cross, because this is town land, and we don't own it, so we can't build the sidewalk in that one section. I also added landscape trees around the street every 70 feet, and then I also added a light at the end of the cul-de-sac. So, I was able to remove the last three waivers that we had asked for originally, and now we only have four waivers pertaining to pavement, the right-of-way, the cross-section because of that first, basically 70 feet of road, and then the open space requirement. Those are the four waivers that we're asking for. So, that's basically what I did. I think there was, I think we did also get a letter from the building inspector regarding the house on Lot 1. I think I did receive something in my email from Bill.
I thought we had a comment from one of our residents who did not want a light down there.
We did.
Didn't we?
We did.
And you're here again today?
There you go.
I'm actually, Mr. Chairman, I'm actually kind of puzzled about why these revisions are even happening. I thought the board was leaning towards that we didn't want to make them put the sidewalks in here, because Mr. Andrew Leverage had talked about providing a sidewalk that would be more beneficial to the residents, as opposed to the sidewalk that just serves no purpose in this industrial. Also, the trees, I thought, the thought, the thinking was that the abutter wanted trees in one location over there, but not up on that, where that road comes in, more in the area of the cul-de-sac on one side.
I mean, I think when we come back in for site plan review, I think we will have more landscaping along the cul-de-sac.
So, where does...
Where'd the sidewalk come from then, right?
Right, so where does the status of the possible sidewalk for that homeowner who was here at the last public?
I can update you on that.
Okay.
So, we've had some discussions internally about that, and no decision has been made yet. We thought that town staff would sit down together and review it to see if there's agreement to go ahead with the offer to put in a sidewalk there. It is a town road, so the board of selectmen need to vote to allow that to go in. We need to be sure that the residents and abutters are in favor of it, so we'd like to have a meeting with the neighborhood folks about that issue, see whether they really want that sidewalk. We know that Mrs. I, who came before the board, was strongly in favor of it, and the applicant is willing to build it if it is the desire of the town to go ahead. So, we need to just make sure the town is in favor of it, and that it's authorized to go forward. So, it's really outside of your approval of this plan, because it's not within the extension that is before you. It's a town road, and it's not part of this subdivision, so it's nothing that you can actually, you know, call for. I think it needs to be left to the selectmen and to the applicant, whether that would go forward or not.
Through the chair, just so that we're clear, this is still a preliminary submission?
Correct.
So, this doesn't require a vote, right?
It doesn't require a vote, but it's helpful to the applicant...
To know.
To know that you've approved this layout and whatever waivers they want, they've asked for, so that when they do the definitive plan, they have a firm foundation as to what you would approve in the definitive plan.
Mr. Chairman, if I may...
You may.
Some simple math here. I think we have, how many waivers initially do we start with?
We had seven.
Seven, so we're down to...
Four.
Down to four now?
We have four now.
Alright, even my simple mind can get around the number of three there, so we're down to three.
We're down to four.
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 Four, okay.
Apparently, your math isn't good.
No. That new math has got me going here. In any event, I see that as a positive, if you will, in terms of we're moving away from waivers, and I think I went on, it may be longer than anyone wanted to listen to it, the last time we discussed this, in terms of the jeopardy that we incur as far as waivers are concerned and the precedence that they set. So, going in that direction, I think, I see that as a positive, frankly. I'm not sure, Mr. Witrober made mention of some thinking that I think may have been on that side of the table perhaps more than it was on this side of the tables.
I'm perplexed right now. I'm... Well, at the last meeting, we heard from some abutters who had concerns, and the applicant was very generous in addressing those concerns, which is, in my opinion, the purpose of a public meeting. Now, we're being told that the progress we made from last week isn't really, it's basically null and void right now, to be determined at a further date, and I'm just a little bit confused about that.
Well, Peter revised the plan to take some of the waivers off the table, so that he's put in sidewalks because it's required, and the streetlight because it's required, and the trees because they're required. Doesn't mean that you have to keep those. You could ask him to not show those if you don't think you want the sidewalks, the trees, et cetera. But again, it's just eliminating the number of waivers to get closer to what the town requires.
Correct, but, I mean, from my standpoint here, we have a road that's not very traveled, it's very quiet. There are only, the residents are pretty much, a few visitors probably the ones who are going down there. It seems to me that a purpose of the public meeting and a purpose of what we're doing here is to try to, if possible, make sure that their concerns are being addressed in a way that is consistent with the rules and regulations we have. So, we heard from them, and again, we're being told that the progress that we made last week is kind of null and void. So, I mean, I'm speaking for myself right now, I agree with Richard, we should get away from providing waivers just willy-nilly, but at the same time, if there is, if by approving a waiver, we're satisfying the concerns of an abutter, I think that's a good trade-off, if it's in the good of the community and the good of everyone involved. So, I'm not trying to get into big discussion, this is just what I'm thinking right now. So, what I'm trying to get at is, if this is a preliminary hearing, and if we're more or less in favor, big picture, with what we're looking at right now, but we need to dive into the details through the board of selectmen, through what the abutters say, that can theoretically, that can be done at a public hearing for the site plan approval, correct?
Well, it's not a site plan, it's a definitive plan.
Definitive plan, okay.
We still have that ahead of us.
So, we still have that ahead of us?
Yes.
So, by approving what's laying in front of us right now, we are not waiving our right to continue the conversation, to address the abutters' concerns, and we're not giving a definitive yes or no on waivers.
Correct.
We're basically saying that what's being shown right now, we're okay with it, but we need to fine-tune based on some variables. So, under those parameters, I'm ready to vote. I mean, are you guys ready to vote, or is there more discussion needed?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make the comment that my concern is that we had quite a few... ...we had quite a few abutters here that night, and I think a lot of those people, when they left this room, they had an idea in their minds exactly how we were going to handle this, and this is-
Correct, but-
Yeah.
-we haven't forgotten that, we're not going to forget that, but we need to hear from the board of selectmen on a couple of issues. So until we can get some feedback from the board of selectmen, we can't act on some of the concerns. And then, I'm saying, right now, we're not saying the concerns aren't valid, we're saying we know those, we're aware of those, we will be addressing these in the definitive plan review.
But you could also state tonight, if you wanted to, that you don't think the sidewalks, the trees, or the streetlights is, is or are required, if that was your preference, or you could wait for the definitive plan stage to make those determinations.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if we read our rules and regulations, there's that key word in there, "shall," and if you look for the word "shall," you're going to find sidewalks, and you're going to find trees, and you're going to see lights, okay? I understand that it may have been inconvenient for some of the abutters in terms of some distress or concern with regards to those, but we do have overriding the concern of an individual or even a group of individuals, the rules and regulations that are in effect for the town of Dudley. And I am somewhat confused as to what seems to me to have been something I would think of as progress, if you will, being questioned to the extent that it is. I think I have no problems at this point with approving, if we come to a vote on it, this preliminary plan as presented.
So I think, big picture, we're on the same page, just to get-
It's a little fuzzy.
Get into, well, to get into the fuzziness a little bit, just as an example, if you have, just one second, sir, if you have thirty-five requirements for fire protection in a building, for example, some of those may be really, even though they're requirements, they may not make sense for that building type, and you can take other methods and other means to achieve the whole building protection- -by doing a little bit of, that satisfies what the, what's actually meant for the building.
Again, Mr. Chairman.
I, I don't think we need to get into-
Let's move the question. Yes, move the question, that's a good idea.
We have an abutter that wants to speak, please, please, coming up front. Yep. Thanks for being with us again.
Thank you for having me up here. Bob St. John, thirty-eight Fish Road, the abutter with direct view of the cul-de-sac. I understand your concern on waivers, but you're already grant, you're already looking at other waivers, why can't we have the open space? Why can't we have the recreation space? Why is that being traded for a playground uptown? You're making this cul-de-sac look like it's downtown Dudley. That's not where it is. It's in the woods. There's a little brook that runs right past it. You're taking this pristine area of forest, field, and making it look like downtown. That's not what Dudley advertises, the website says, a pleasant rural community. A streetlight to basically light up my bedroom at night is not a nice rural community. If I wanted to live in town, I would have bought a house in town. I didn't buy a house in Dudley at the end of a dead-end street to change it into something else. I bought it because it was quiet, it was dark, it was nice. I didn't buy it because it had sidewalks, because it doesn't. Sidewalks will destroy the character of the area. I know they're planning to put a farm down there, and I trust that they're going to do it in a way that blends in with the natural area that it's in. Right now, I can see the entire facility. I will see the cul-de-sac, I will see the light, I will see the light, I'm asking you to see the light. Bam-bam.
Mr. Chairman, if I may respond, sir, we appreciate, I appreciate your concerns, obviously, but they are your concerns. What we are bound to is the rules and regulations-
And you have a waiver process.
I was very polite, I listened to your argument-
Yes, you were, thank you.
And I would appreciate the courtesy.
Sorry.
We are bound by the rules and regulations of the town of Dudley. You, as an individual, certainly are a part of the town of Dudley, are entitled to a voice, which we have just heard, but yours is not the final determinant in terms of whether or not we grant a waiver. And again, I submit that our requirement is to abide by the rules and regulations as presented, and as approved, and as documented. And if you look back to the glossary of that, you'll find the word "shall," and very shortly thereafter, you'll find the word "light," okay? "Shall" is a, is a requirement. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about it, the word is defined in the glossary.
I'm well-educated, I understand.
Thank you, I, I don't doubt that at all, sir, thank you.
But you do also have, in your rules and regulations, the process of a waiver.
Yes, we do.
Which is for exception cases, as the chairman stated, to make it right. Requiring sidewalks is not right.
You made it sound like some moral, some more-
Issue of morality, right versus wrong.
I don't think that's, that's applicable in this situation, sir.
You're taking something that's pretty rural and making it look like a city. That's not what I moved to Dudley for.
Guy, did you have a comment?
Thank you.
I was just gonna say that, making a comment where he said that, you know, we should require the open space. I mean, if you, if you read up on the open space, what the open space is to be done in a, in a subdivision setting, is that at some point in time, the open space is to be conveyed to the town, to be used for things such as parks and playgrounds and things like that, or sports fields, whatever. I mean, to, I, I don't think we've, most of us have been there, I don't know if Mr. Lepage has been there or not.
Yeah, I've driven down.
Okay. I don't think this is the place where we want to invite the public to come to, it's in an industrial area, and it's going to be in a secure industrial area because of the product that they're going to be manufacturing. So I don't think that that, you know, I, I don't think a waiver for the open space in this area is going to be a detriment to the town, it's going to probably be a positive. And at the last meeting, the applicant did say that he would be open to making improvements or doing something to other open space areas in town where, you know, you want to invite the public to. This isn't necessarily a place where I think you want to invite the public to.
Agreed, and I think if I may speak for Mr. St. John, that's the point he was making, by using common sense, that we're pretty much saying we're okay with the waiver for the open space because it doesn't fit in this area, the way you can use the same reasoning slash common sense to deal with trees, sidewalks, and/or streetlights.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, there was a gentleman, Belano Voltaire, I think his comment was something to the effect that common sense is not that common. So, that may be, be, obviously, we're not in the same continent or in the same time frame, but we do have, as a bedrock, if you will, the rules and regulations, and I would submit, in fact, Mr. Chairman, the rules and regulations address the issue with regards to non-residential subdivisions, which are more stringent than those that apply to subdivisions as we generally consider them. And that requires sidewalks will be required on both sides, and it says additionally, non-residential subdivisions shall, that nasty word again, conform to all requirements applicable to residential subdivisions except as follows, it had mentioned specifically sidewalks on both sides.
So we've got a number of people that want to speak, but if I just, okay, how do you feel about the open spaces?
I am in agreement with Mr. Horn.
But it says "shall" in there.
It does say "shall."
Then, you need to figure it out.
No, no, no.
Alright.
It's, it's not all or nothing, Mr. Chairman.
If you're willing to be, to waiver on one, you can compromise and waiver on another.
You may, I won't.
Hi, Guy.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Mary Plant, I live at thirty-four Fish Road.
What you need to do, please?
Mary Plant.
Okay.
With an E at the end. One, few of my major concerns, and I've talked with Rich a lot about it, he gets constant phone calls with me, is because of the, the way the trucks have been driving down the road. It's been ridiculous, the speed and all, so he was kind enough last week to hire police patrol two days in a row, and he said the next step will be that they'll pull them over on the big road, on thirty-one, one thirty-one, actually, to take care of some of these problems, because these trucks have been ridiculous, the way they drive on our road. If you've been on our road, it's a small road. It's not narrow enough for even the truck and a car to go by, it's, it's, it's ridiculous. So that's, that's a major concern for us, the safety. Another one of my concerns is the fact with the aquifer. We all have wells. I want to know if our wells run dry, what is going to happen? Because we take from the top, and the way I assume, they're going to be taken from the bottom. So if this goes down, our wells will run dry, but they'll still have water. What's going to happen to our, our wells? That's a major concern, we want to know what's going to happen with that. We also want to know what's going to be going on with, it, once they have the use of what they're going to do with the, I think it was ten or twelve, if they're going to be adding more on, and if that happens, more of the waters that we use is going to be taken from us. So that's another major concern, is if this is going to continue on with more being added on. But Riches and, and John have been, I have to say, they have been very convenient to me, they've been really helpful, everything I, any concerns I've been bringing up, they've been trying to deal with immediately for me, and I have to say, I have to condone, say thank you for that. But my major concern is the traffic, the amount of trucks on the road, and the aquifer for us. It's, it's been crazy.
Excuse my ignorance, where is thirty-four, how far away from the site?
We're three houses down.
From the site?
Yes.
Alright, so, we have that gravel road, you guys have that gravel road that's-
It's right behind my house.
The gravel road's behind your house?
And I hear it all day long.
Okay.
It's, it's, the, the woods, it doesn't block the sound anymore, you just hear it all day long. It's, it's, it's a constant noise level.
Okay.
And the only time it's quiet is basically on a Saturday, if it's not being used on Saturday, and Sundays is my quiet day, where we can hear nature.
Alright, so the aquifer concerns will be definitely dealt with during the definitive plan process, there will be a study done by experts-
And that will be, will that be, and also, we were told also that we would be informed of all these meetings, that Deloria would be calling us and letting us know through an email, and that's never happened, we've, I'm sorry, but we've never gotten emails at all to let us notify us that these meetings are happening, so we can be here for that.
Is that just for the, how does that work for the abutters slash everybody in the street?
Public meetings not required for a preliminary plan, but it would be required for both the definitive plan and for the special permit.
Okay. So, excuse my ignorance here, but, so being on thirty-four Fish Road and not being a direct abutter, they would still get a notice for the definit-
Yes, it'd be within-
Alright. So when the definitive, when the definitive, oh, three hundred feet, that's right. So the definitive plan process comes, you will be getting a letter.
Okay.
But this is just preliminary, so we appreciate you, I don't know how you found out about it, we appreciate you being here.
And I know Laura went to talk.
Okay, and then, just, the expansion plans, aren't we limited per site, what we can do as far, what can be done as far as square footage?
For the cultivation facility, well, there's a limit of a hundred thousand square feet of canopy space from the Cannabis Control Commission regulations. As I understand it, the first phase would be one greenhouse of fifty to sixty thousand square feet or so.
Okay.
With the possibility of another to reach the hundred thousand square feet if the first phase is successful.
Okay. So I'm not sure if you, if you've got all that, correct me if I'm wrong, please, gentlemen, the first phase, we're going to, they're going to have fifty thousand square feet of canopy space, and they're allowed to go to a hundred thousand?
We don't know that yet.
They don't know that yet, but that, that is the limit if, if they get permitted for it?
We've got to get permitted.
Yeah.
Zero eleven, I think it's called.
Yeah, it's, I think, and I'm, excuse my ignorance on this too, there's different levels of approval for size of the canopy space. It all depends on the Cannabis Control Commission. So we should have more information on that, it's time for the definitive plan?
Mr. Chairman, the definitive plan is, is only for this cul-de-sac.
That's true too, yeah, that's true too.
So there will be a special permit requirement?
There's a special-
That'd be the special permit.
The rest of that is a special permit, I mean, wait, this-
Thank you for your correction, yeah.
This, this meeting right here is for the benefit of the job.
Alright, I'm getting confused. Thank you. Come on up. You're next.
Good evening.
Hi.
I hate using these, but I will. My name is Laura Tenelli, I live at thirty-three Fish Road with my husband, Tim, and I echo Mary's concerns, and I also would like to thank Rich and Jonathan, they've been really great, they have listened to us, they've come to our neighborhood meetings, they've been super professional and really tried to answer all our questions. The only one that I have that I feel like we don't have enough information is the water. We live up high, we live up on the hill, up, it's like, it's a very long driveway, and we're down, our well is down four hundred and fifty feet, so that's a concern for me because what, what will happen? I mean, I don't know how much water is underneath, I really don't, and I'd like to have, like, hydrologists to determine, I don't know how they even do that. I know that sounds ignorant, but I don't understand how they even determine how much water can be used, but as, for my husband and I, recently I had to, the only way I know this is because recently I had to put in two filters, one was for arsenic, because we had arsenic in the fall, and also we had, like, a sulfur type of smell, so we have two separate filters. And, so I know how much water I use daily, and my average is ninety-seven gallons a day. That's for my husband and I, granted, that's a small family, I'm quite sure other families are using more than that. However, in a year, I would probably use thirty-seven hundred gallons, thirty-seven thousand gallons. They're going to use that in four days. So what I would use in a full year, they will use in four days, for just what they're going to have right now, not if they expand. So I'm a little concerned with the residential well and how it was all set up for a house and whatnot, I don't know if it can handle all that, and that, that's my biggest concern, because if our house, if our wells go dry, what happens to us? Is Dudley going to put in town water for us? I don't know, but we lose our, you know, investment of our homes, and we're spending a lot of money on those homes, so, anyway.
Mr. Chairman, I, maybe just for a point of clarification, because obviously, this is a, this is a very valid concern.
Mm-hmm.
But the purpose of tonight's meeting is regarding just the subdivision of the land.
Okay.
So what would be very important for you would be to make sure that you come back-
Oh, definitely.
-during the special permit.
Yes.
Because that deals with more of the business that they're going to put there and the water usage.
Okay, I understand, I thought it was tonight because last week I heard somebody say that we were going to talk about the water tonight, so that's why I made sure I was here.
And you did.
I did, I'm here, but anyway, but thank you for listening.
Right, thank you. Alright, sir.
Paul Lyons, fifteen Fish Road, Dudley, and since the gentleman brought up that this is about the, the cul-de-sac mainly, and that was discussed last week, I never got a definitive answer to my question, I brought up the subject about driveways, roadways, paths coming off the cul-de-sac at a future date, that Mr. Clark brought up about what's going to happen in the future. Is there a way, whether it's tonight or at another meeting, that you guarantee there will be no, no other paths, roadways, or anything else, other than sidewalk coming off the cul-de-sac, so that traffic does not go up, straight up Fish Road to go into the future facilities that are going to be there? On April seventh, the gentleman told us at a meeting that they had purchased on April seventh, the gravel road, and everything would be going down there, well, that's over two months ago, and we still not have received, I don't know if you gentlemen received anything, that, that that purchase went through. So, I spoke about it last meeting, it's a public road, is there any, there is no, as far as I know, there's no way you can force someone to go down a gravel road miles out of their way when a public road will go straight up, and speaking of the future, what if they sell the facility in three or four years? Will the new owners be locked in to not putting roads off the cul-de-sac? I've, I've had people tell me about different people that start these facilities, they make a good profit, and then a few years down the road, it's sold for a really good profit, and things can change then with new owners. These are different concerns that I would like addressed, please.
So, thank you, Mr. Lyons. Mr. Chairman, I thought, I recall that at last meeting, we did discuss this, and that we talked about that we could require, we could put in a stipulation? Bill?
About what?
That we could put in a stipulation requiring- That we could put in a stipulation requiring that there is no access to the, to the proposed new facility from that cul-de-sac. I thought that we had assurances that all the traffic was going to be, I'm getting an nod of assurance.
Well, the, that is part of the subdivision process, because you're creating public ways, and the public has a right-
Right.
-to traverse over public ways. But as part of your special permit requirement, you would probably ask for a traffic study to study the impacts, and as part of that process, you could impose conditions on your decision for access to the marijuana grow facility.
So, if I understand you correctly, Bill, what you're saying is, we can impose conditions saying that they could not put a road in to access the marijuana grow facility from the cul-de-sac, but that, that condition would have to be part of the special permit process?
Yes.
And it can't be part of tonight's subject.
Okay.
So we're, we're well aware, and again, I would say, as I just said to the last one, come to the special permit.
I'm sure we'll be here. And one other thing. I'm getting old. The, you mentioned the, the house, that building inspector or someone. Are we privy, the public privy to what decisions are gonna be made with the house that's on the property?
Bill, can we read that letter into the record tonight?
I don't think I have it with me.
There is no decision that's been made.
So, the building commissioner was asked, what is the status of that zoning as part of this project? And he said that, one, the house can stay, even though the road will violate the setbacks, but that the applicant needs to go to the zoning board of appeals for relief. Needs to get a special permit to allow that non-conformity to occur. But he, the building commissioner didn't think the house needed to be moved. It can't be used for residential purposes, but it could be used for, you know, as part of the cultivation facility such as the security office.
So they're gonna waive the, the need for pass permits? That the building doesn't have?
Well, they'll still need to get valid building permits.
Okay. And that would come through the zoning board?
Through the building commissioner.
And will they have hearings on that, do you know?
No, not as part of the building permit process, only as part of the zoning exception process to get a special permit to allow that structure to remain where it is.
Okay. The only other thing is, at the last meeting, there was a question at the end, we didn't get to see the easel, it was pointed this way. But if I'm not mistaken, it is, he, the gentleman's asking for a waiver because the frontage is not up to town standards. Correct?
No.
What frontage does he have then? My, 'cause the town has told me, you need, you need frontage on a public, accepted public road. They, they have a hundred thirty feet?
The cul-de-sac creates the frontage.
Right, I understand that, but as Mr. Clark said in the last meeting, that's why they're asking for this to be accepted, just so that they basically have the requirement waived with that cul-de-sac.
That will satisfy the requirement.
Okay.
It won't need to be a waiver.
It's not to waive it, it's, it's to satisfy it.
Because they don't have the frontage. Without that cul-de-sac.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Don't say that, that's not true.
That's true, that, that changed.
I have the frontage to split that piece of land in half. I don't need to be here, I told you at the last meeting. I don't need to put this road in, I'm spending two hundred and sixty thousand dollars of my money to do that for the town of Dudley. Not for me. I have the frontage, the access to the pit, and I have the frontage in front of that house. I can take those two pieces of land and combine them and split them in half, and I don't have to sit here. I don't have to put a sidewalk in, I don't have to put a street light up, I don't have to put trees in, I don't have to put the road in. I did that because I was asked to by the town officials in this town. For the cul-de-sac in there, by the highway department and by the selectmen. I was asked by the fire department to put a twenty thousand gallon cistern in, which I agreed to. I don't need to put a cistern in there, I'm gonna have two fire ponds up there, I don't need to put a cistern in there. I'm agreeing to do that because I'm trying to be a nice guy, and I gotta give up three acres of land to do this. So, I'm not, I'm gonna listen, sit here and listen to say something, says that I don't have the frontage. I explained this at the last meeting, I have the frontage with the two pieces of land. I take the sixteen acres and I take the ten acres, I combine them, and I can split it in half, I don't need to sit here. I have, I already have the frontage, so all we need to do is be at the special hearing for the grow facility itself, that's it. That's all I'm, I'm only stating what the facts are.
Understood.
I'm doing, as far as the public interest is concerned, which Mr. Clark said at the last meeting, this is all on the public interest, not mine. Not my interest at all. I have to spend two hundred and sixty grand out of my pocket. It's not my interest.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Lyons, can I ask you? I'm trying to figure out exactly where you live on, on-
Right across from the, the gravel dirt road that goes down to the pit.
The road that goes up to the solar farm, are you on the left side of it or on the right side of it?
I'm on the left side.
You're on the left side of it?
Yes. The gravel, the gravel road's on the right side.
Okay.
But through the chairman, I would say, that's a separate piece, piece of property, correct?
No. Not if I combine it, it isn't.
But it's not combined, I don't, through the chairman, but at the moment, it's not combined.
At the moment, it's not, but it could be.
You're right.
Right.
Exactly right.
Okay. I thank you for your time, consideration, if there's nothing else, thank you.
Alright, thank you for your time. Here we are. What's next?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I was just gonna say that one of the abutters who spoke this evening spoke about not wanting the lights and things like that. And the problem now, of course, is, well, not really a problem, but the situation now is that the applicant has now withdrew those requests for those waivers anyways. So I guess at this point, we should move forward with talking about the waivers that they are asking for. I think that the issue of the waivers-
Mr. Whitro, we are in agreement, thank you.
No, I wouldn't say that.
Well, no, we are in agreement to the extent that you've gone so far.
I'm put into a position, I came fully prepared to vote and approve waivers for no sidewalks, no trees, and no light. I came fully prepared to vote for that this evening. Now I'm put into a position where I would have to vote against this because they put, they took the waivers off the table? I'm not gonna do that, I'm not gonna stop this developer, when now he's basically put the stuff back in.
Don't forget, this is preliminary.
I understand, right, so I'll have that, we can have that fight down the road. And the abutters will come back and they can-
And by the way, I might add that there's a stop sign at the end of Airport Road that annoys the heck out of me, and because I'm an individual that lives on Airport Road, I want that taken out. And I wanna see if somebody on this board wouldn't support me in that effort, because that seems to be the way in which we're going.
I, I just wanna make a point. We're going back and forth here about waivers and showers, and we just agreed to another developer putting in sidewalks only on one side, granted him tree waivers, granted him all kinds of waivers, in a residential neighborhood. This is not a residential neighborhood, what he's putting in. The trees make no sense to me, the sidewalks make no sense to me, not in this, not in this application.
Mr. Chairman, all I have recourse to is, it's in my edition here, page thirty-six, the non-residential subdivision requirements, which states very plainly that it's all the requirements applicable to residential subdivisions except as follows, and there essentially, they are additions to.
Then it should be no waivers at all, period, no waivers.
Well-
No waivers.
We have chapter forty-one, section eighteen.
Eighty-one R.
Eighty-one, eighty-one R, eighty-one R. We have the opportunity as a planning board to grant waivers if we deem them to be in the public interest. Now, everyone's interpretation of the public interest is yours and mine, and Mr. Whitro was individually, and whoever he's waiving to as well.
The abutters, and the public.
And, and-
And the ones that live there.
In the public interest, but the public interest does not concern itself with the stop sign that's my issue, or one gentleman's question, it is the public in terms of the town of Dudley, if you will. The approximate twelve thousand people in the town of Dudley. And not for the convenience or the betterment or the necessary, you know, the, the preference of one individual. You know, and we can't, this is, I, I-
The town of Dudley's getting the cul-de-sac for their fire engine to turn around in, and their snowplow to turn around in, and then, and they're getting a cistern to help fight fires for any houses on those streets. That's what the town of Dudley is getting.
Good. So, I think we've had a great conversation tonight as far as laying the groundwork for some of the items that we need to talk about during the definitive plan. We all have some strong opinions on it, which is also good. And I think that, from the sound of it, we're in basic agreement with the plan that is in front of us. So we're looking for an approval, an acceptance, or just a thumbs up?
Looking for a vote to approve the plan.
Alright.
Present or ask you want to modify it?
So can I get a motion from the planning board, from one of the members?
Well, do we need to get the list of the remaining waivers, or are we all clear on that?
Just, we can either accept the plan as it is, we cannot accept it, and ask for recommendations, but either way, we have definitive-
So through the chair, Mr. Planner, we do not have to address the waivers this evening?
The waivers are presented on the plan, Steve. On the second sheet, under the locust map. So if you accept this plan as presented, you would be accepting the waivers as listed there? Or you could just, if you, you don't, not in favor of one or more of those waivers, you should so include that in your motion, I think.
So by accepting the plan as is tonight and voting on it, assuming that we have an affirmative that we've accepted, that does not mean that we can't ask for modifications in the definitive plan process, correct?
Correct.
Correct. And that would give the abutters a chance to once again speak? Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we accept the plan as presented this evening, pending further discussion at a future meeting when we discuss the definitive plan. I have a motion, I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Hopefully no more discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. So again, for the abutters, there will be a definitive plan process, and we will be reviewing the waivers in more detail. Can we close the public meeting before we take a motion?
It's not a public hearing, so it's no need to close it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Just so you know about the, the house, the only reason that house wouldn't conform to the setbacks is because the way they wanted that cul-de-sac put in. If I was to come down that road and take a hard left, I don't need to go in front of the zoning board of appeals with that foundation for that house. I'm like doing what everybody asked us to do.
No, it's, I mean, it's appreciated, I mean, let's talk, do discussions with the town and everything, it's appreciated. And I know that we have a lot of work to do with some of the butters, and, you know, with the planning board, there's a couple of items we need to work out, but I think we're-
Concerns the water, but you always, you know what that is, you know?
Yeah, I think we're going down the good path so far.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, gentlemen, thank you. Alright. Lively as always.
I, I don't see how that road's even wide enough.
Well, it isn't.
To put a sidewalk in, I mean, where, where the other houses are now.
No, it would only be from West Dudley Road to the gravel access road.
Right, which isn't a wide road. Isn't a wide road.
You would have to widen the road, for sure, with the sidewalk.
And take down a lot of trees.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's a huge expense.
So that's why I think it's important to hear from all of the neighbors there, whether they actually want that sidewalk.
My point of it is, is if he's willing to do that, that's gotta be more of an expense than putting a cul-de-sac, to putting a sidewalk around the cul-de-sac, and if he's, in my opinion, if he's willing to do that-
I, I understand, and that's why, Guy, I was so great, I was so grateful to hear that he was gonna be willing, I believe he even said he was gonna be willing to provide a letter to his intent to do so.
Right.
Problem is, we just made him pay for sidewalks that aren't necessary.
No, that can still-
We haven't done anything yet.
No, that, that can still be negotiated at the definitive plan process.
Stay in the business, Mr. Chairman.
We're trying. Alright, so we discussed pure pont already, we're good there? Rocky Hill? He asked to, anything to report?
On lines of state, you may recall, Mr. Rovain came in at the last meeting, and you approved his completion estimate. He, based on that, the bond was submitted and approved by the town treasurer, so he now has a bond for that amount, so that he can get lot releases for the seventeen lots on that plan.
Okay.
There was currently another issue that's come up, the water and sewer department is opposed to the location of the fire hydrant. When the planning board acted on that definitive plan, the fire chief had recommended that that fire hydrant be moved from the beginning of the subdivision, about five or six hundred feet down that roadway. So we included that at that fire chief's request, and that became part of the decision, and Mr. Rovain built that subdivision according to the approved plan, with the fire hydrant moved at that location. The water and sewer commission, though, doesn't want it there. So Mr. Rovain is kind of in a pickle at the moment, because he's got an approved plan, which says it should be there, but the water and sewer commission don't want it there.
What's their reasoning?
It's a dead end, it's a, a dead end for the hydrant, it doesn't loop around, so they have to flush it periodically. They, what they were hoping for was maybe a couple of homes could tie in to that water line, which is down the, which is now in the road. But that would require, I mean, I don't, I don't know what it would require, but some other construction work to access the water line.
'Cause those homes were gonna be well?
They were all permitted for private wells and septic systems.
Oh, they're not sewer, they're not on the sewer system?
There's a sewer line, I think, I think that, I think they're, I'm not sure, I think they're septic systems, but I'm not positive.
Okay, I thought so too.
So, that issue is currently before the water and sewer commission as to what, what they want in terms of permitting that, that, that water main.
There are some homes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry. Didn't they have a chance to review the plan, water and sewer?
They did, they reviewed and approved the plan with the hydrant at the road entrance.
Which was the request of the fire department, right?
But then the fire chief came in later and requested it, so the engineer modified the plan to meet the fire chief's request, which is the plan the planning board approved.
Well, I don't think it's fair to Mr. Rovain to have to change it now, he's already got it in.
Right.
Seems to me public safety would trump having to flush something once every now and then, but-
I mean, I suppose he could put in another hydrant where the water commission, water sewer commission wants it, and then just not use the water main in the street, which means he put a lot of money into it for nothing, but it's a way for him to do move forward. So I think the fire chief needs to, you know, get involved in this too, to explain why he asked for that and how important it is. I'm, I'm assuming it's a health and safety issue.
Or, or you're saying, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, what, so, or you were saying that a couple of houses could tie in near the end there, and that would solve the problem?
That would, that would make the water sewer commission happier, I think.
What I was gonna say was, I know that there are homes in town that aren't on water lines, public water lines, but that sewer runs in front of their house, so they have private wells, but they still have a meter, because they pay for municipal sewer. So I don't see why there wouldn't be a reason why you couldn't have the opposite, where you could have those couple of houses down there on public water, even though they have private sewer. The meter's gonna go on the water side anyways, to figure out what the billing's gonna be.
Right.
So it would just be a matter of opening the road enough to do a tie-in of a couple of water lines. That doesn't sound-
Can they tap domestic water off a sprinkler line?
I believe so, I believe they-
It's all, it's all town water.
It's all town water.
Yeah.
So what happens is, you know, if you don't flush the hydrant, it becomes stagnant, and it's all part of the one system, so it's not like the water just stays there, it kind of circulates throughout, so it does require routine maintenance. of circulates throughout, so it does require routine maintenance on the hydrant.
I just, if I remember correctly, the, we approved a waiver for the length of the cul-de-sac, right?
Yes.
So, if that waiver had not been approved, and it was only whatever it was supposed to be, then the, having the hydrant at the end of this subdivision makes more sense than if they don't have the distance for the fire chief, and I understand.
I think that's, yeah, that's correct.
I understand completely where the fire chief is coming from, and again, to me, it sounds like public safety would trump the cost for having to have a couple of people flush something, but.
Right. So, I'll keep you posted on that, it's sort of an evolving issue, I don't have a resolution yet.
Because the question would be how, you know, how does Mr. Raveen feel about the, the idea of putting two houses on town water down there?
He doesn't want to unless he has to. Additional costs for him to do that.
Okay.
He might have already put the wells in.
I don't think he's done that yet.
Because water is required to get a building permit, so I don't know where he's at in that phase.
It's still step one, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I don't, I don't know, Steve, well enough to tell you what's, what is possible.
Well, they might want that.
Excuse me, through the, through the chair, Bill, do you know, did they propose for that subdivision, because they have that large detention basin at the end of the cul-de-sac? Did they propose putting a, like a water pickup in there for the, for the fire department in case they went to a house fire at that cul-de-sac, and they needed extra water, that they could draw it out of the?
No, I don't believe so.
They didn't, okay.
I don't know if that's a permanent pool.
Okay. Well, it's very full right now. Looks like a lake.
Oh.
All right, so if, as far as standard business, all the subdivisions, we're, we're good there? We can move on to legacy landing?
Yes.
Wait.
Did we have any updates? We got, I, I recall, it wasn't the last meeting, maybe a couple of meetings ago, Mr. Wetrova had some very specific questions with regards to Tobin Farms, and looking for information, and I'm wondering, have we made any progress in regards?
I haven't had the time, you know, I've been busy with so much other.
Still on the table?
Yes.
Thank you.
I did want to add one other quick thing regarding Tobin Farms. I did quite a bit of research regarding betterments and special assessments, and specifically regarding sidewalks and whatnot. I found a very interesting document for, that's on the town of Mashpee website, and I printed it out. I was gonna read it tonight, but because we ran kind of long tonight, and I know the Bruins are playing.
So, DVI support?
Maybe I could just give it to Bill, ask him to scan it, and maybe just email it to all the board members, would that?
Sure, for me?
Just so you guys take a look. But it's a, what it is, is it's a procedure for road conversion. It's a procedure that the town of Mashpee has, that they follow when it comes to trying to convert private roads and subdivisions over to public. And it's kind of interesting how they deal with roads that aren't finished or completed, and bringing them up to stuff, and who pays for it, how that's all worked out, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Want to pass that down, Steve?
Yeah.
Legacy landing?
So, you recall the last meeting? Oh, I guess I'll let Mr. Haynes speak for himself.
Again, I have the thought that I need to accuse myself, accuse myself, Mr. Chairman.
Move to the audience.
Evening.
Thanks for having me, Mr. Chairman. So, at the last meeting, I proposed an idea to the board regarding putting up a cash bond to be able to get building permits for homes while we were building infrastructure at the site. I went into a little bit more detail on how that would work, and I'm here before you tonight to see what your thoughts are about that.
The email that Mr. Haynes sent is in tab D.
So, the last time we talked about this, I thought we talked about that we needed to get town council involved, as far as whether or not this was something that was even kosher.
Yeah, I was sort of waiting for some more specific detail before I sent it to town council, so I haven't done that yet.
So, I would, I, I don't want to jump the gun here, but I would say that my position is that I am still, I read the letter already, the email, and I'm still open to moving forward with this idea, provided that town council would give its blessing, because we talked about how this is, this is not something we've seen before.
And the amount, you think, is right?
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five percent?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I, I haven't had personal knowledge of one being done within the past five years, but about five years ago, I, I know somebody that had a house taken down. It was a pretty good-sized house, and it was thirteen thousand.
I, I, I raised that amount, I had mentioned twenty at the last meeting, and, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to.
Do it, no problem.
Somebody at the last meeting said, you know, with the, with the twenty, cover it. I've taken down in the last three years, two large Colonials, cost about twenty thousand. These are just one-story ranches, which is about half of what the Colonial would be, so I figured that would probably be double what the, the final cost would be.
I, I can't remember, did we happen to ask whether or not these are slab construction or basement?
They, they actually have full basements.
They have full basement, okay. So, and, so your cost analysis, that would include filling in those cell holes?
Correct.
Jim, are you proposing cash or a bond?
It, it, I mean, I will do cash, so that will, yeah, that will take, you know, the bond scenario out of it. There's so many different ways to do bonds these days, and, and quite frankly, the insurance bonds is, is one way to go now, but I think the town would have more security with a cash bond.
So, with twenty-two units times twenty-five thousand, what's that work out to altogether?
Well, I mean, we're never gonna get to that number. I mean, if we got to six or seven before it's paved, that would be a lot.
I see. Well, that would require final paving, then, in order to.
Yes. And, and, yes, and I, and again, I wouldn't, I would ask the building inspector for, and he, again, he'll have to approve this, but for a building permit, but I would not ask for an occupancy permit, but I would ask for, you know, the regular inspections as we went along. His first inspection would be a frame inspection, and then insulation, and then, et cetera, so. And, and if things go as planned, if I have pavement down by the end of August, you know, there, there wouldn't be any, any, any closings until maybe October. So, I think that the town would be, what I'm trying to show here is, is that just reduce any risk that you, you know, the town may think they have, in order, just to get a jump on this.
So, Mr. Chairman, my understanding is, this would mean that no matter how far along he gets with the construction of any one of these houses, he cannot get an occupancy permit until the subdivision is at his, at the final approval stage, correct?
If the, the pavement is down, and, yes, yes.
Well, I guess the question would be, normally, you allow lot releases when a binder pavement is down. So, are you suggesting that they, that he complete the infrastructure work before he gets an occupancy permit?
I'm not suggesting that, I thought that's what he just said.
No, well, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to put the final pavement down until the project was a hundred percent completed. You know, that's what, because we'd bust it up, you know, building houses with, with, with all the construction activity going there. So, with the binder cost down, I'm sure that's how you do it in your, with your, with your subdivision approvals now.
Okay. So, we would just follow the regular subdivision?
Right.
Okay, sure.
Okay.
Through the chair, Mr. Haynes, I was wondering if I could ask you, I understand what you're trying to do here, so you're trying to, I'm looking at this like, you'd probably want to build a small section, you don't want to group these houses together that you're starting before the, before the road construction. So, could I ask, where would you, where would you, what do you see yourself starting on this project? It's rather large, it comes from two different streets. Would you start building these houses towards the airport roadside, or would you start building them towards the Dudley Hill roadside?
I, I believe we're gonna start, we're gonna take the barn down first, and start the roadway in from Airport Road.
Okay.
And then, the right-hand side, we're gonna use for, to store our loom, pile it there. So, I would start on the left-hand side, as we start to cut that road in, from Airport Road, but, but let me please confirm that with my, my site contractor, to give you a more definitive answer, but that's the way I believe it should go.
Okay.
But I will, you know, I'll, his opinion will influence, you know, how, how that happens.
All right, so like, if I look at, remember looking at your plan from the airport roadside, when the barn comes down, there's like a little enclave of like five houses, like, over behind that barn. You, that's where you're planning a stock, a stockpile in your room?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
So, you'd start going down the left-hand side of the road, heading towards the church?
Correct.
Okay.
So, my thinking is, once we.
Mr. Chairman, from the public, when, when does the barn come down?
I, I came Friday to get a demolition permit, application, so I hope to have it in by this Friday. And I, I just met with the Water and Sewer Commission to make sure that I could tie into Water and Sewer, and they gave me a letter saying that, you know, the permits would be turned over to me. I didn't want to move forward without having that information. So, now, I'm scheduled to close on Friday with Mr. Ruda, so then I'll own it as of Friday, and will, we did all our, our hay bales and sill fencing last week.
Okay, so, in all of that, was the date when the barn was coming down?
Well, when I get the permit from the building department.
Okay, so shortly there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you're, you're, again, one more question, if I may. Full basements?
Full basements, yes.
And supply, some pump with those?
Absolutely. We do the.
There's been water there.
Yeah, I know, I, I, I looked at the groundwater reports, so we're gonna have to deal with it.
Yeah.
So, we would, it sounds to me like we're leaning towards agreement pending town council input and building inspector input, correct?
So, I will ask town council whether twenty-five thousand dollar cash deposit per unit is acceptable security for this, this project?
I think that would be possibly a fair question, but it's more just the, what I call legality, or the procedure of it.
Right, yeah.
I think we're all pretty much okay with the, with the sum, with the amount.
Again, this isn't a subdivision, it's a condominium, so the rules may be a little different, I'm not sure.
So, I don't think we need to vote, do we need to vote on this?
You could wait until the next meeting, when I have more information, maybe that would be appropriate.
I'd like to give Mr. Haynes some kind of, kind of input right now, if possible. I mean, I don't know if we need a formal vote, or if we can vote pending those reports, or if we just want to give a verbal, if everybody's kind of given a verbal, I'm okay with this so far, that's what they have to say.
I'd be uncomfortable telling him he could go forward.
I don't know, but the town council opinion. Right.
I guess I prefer to get the assurance from council first, before we take any action.
Instead of giving them false information, a false blessing, however you want to put it.
That's the case, town council back and says that, oh, no, you should do it this way, that, you know, there's a way to do this, but you have to do it.
But in the past, I think we've, we've, we've given our approval pending certain input from other people before, but we don't have to right now. So, what I'm, what I'm hearing is.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I appreciate that, you know, you're trying to do that, and I really appreciate the board being open-minded enough to understand, you know, what I'm trying to accomplish here. I really do appreciate that.
Thank you.
Right, yeah, so hopefully we'll get something from town council, and we just.
Through the chair, have you done any projects like this before in the past?
Many.
Where?
I just finished two in Dudley, I mean, in Boylston, forty-two units, and I'm just finishing up a thirty unit. I'm doing another thirty unit in Shoesbury right now, and I'm permitting another one in Boylston, twenty-two, twenty-three, actually. And I've been building over fifty-five since nineteen ninety-three, and I have a, a long history of over fifty-five communities.
Have you had to approach any other towns with this?
The last town I approached, I asked Boylston, and they let me do three before there were any roads in. And, and so that, that worked out, because I had just finished another one in their town, and, you know, they, they knew I wasn't going anywhere. I live in a town also.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, sounds like, since we get some input from building inspector and the town council, we should be good to go?
Thank you very much for hearing me.
Yep. Thanks for your patience tonight, once again.
Okay.
We can get you on first.
It was interesting.
Welcome back, Richard.
I'm back, yes.
I've asked you for working, she's.
Oh, man. She's actually a lot better.
Is she?
Yeah, she's, she's not involved now.
Oh, okay, good.
So, it's really, it's really a lot better.
Have a good night.
Planners, please?
I've heard from the engineer working on the site plan for the Stevens Mill, so I just want to let you know that I think that plan will be coming in soon.
Good.
For the redevelopment of the mill into about a hundred and fifty-six housing units.
Fifty, was, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, was it? Is that a smaller number than I thought I heard somewhere?
Initially, it was a hundred and sixty-three, I think, and then I heard one sixty, and now I'm hearing one fifty-six.
Oh, okay, variable.
Yeah, so I, this looks pretty solid at this point, but, and then it would include community event space, which we had talked about before, so for weddings and, you know, banquets and things of that sort, so that would be part of the project as well. So, we're gonna have a, a meeting with town staff, I think, to go over the plan and make sure all department's concerns are addressed, and then it would come in as a formal submission as a special permit with site plan approval to the planning board.
So, you've seen it?
Yes, I have a draft concept plan.
You see anything regarding public access to the waterfront?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
It's part of it?
Good.
I did submit a Mass Works application for infrastructure work in the Villa Street, Villa Street, our Lock Place area, for engineering design. I think it was a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars to hire an engineer to do the design for sewer lines and sidewalks improvements in that area. So, we'll probably hear at the end of the summer, early fall, whether that's been accepted. Then, the town would hire an engineer to do the work, and then hopefully apply in the following year for construction money. Last night, we had a presentation by the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission on the local rapid response plan that they've been working on for Economic Development Committee. So, it was a public forum, we had two business owner, two business, people who run two businesses in the quarter or ten. We had a pretty good discussion with them on that process, so that's moving along nicely. It is a, as a rapid planning process, we should have that wrapped up by the end of August, I think. So, those are two or three main issues going on in my office at the moment.
Any comments from the planning board?
Central Mass Regional Planning has their annual meeting tomorrow in Grafton. I have RSVP, planning to attend. As you can see, something further down there, I did do a master planning workshop online, and one of the things that came to light is that everybody has to have a master plan, and Dudley does. And I'll hold this up as Exhibit A, dated two thousand. One of the things that I found in looking through this is that some of the data, actually, a good deal of the data is based on the nineteen ninety census, so this thing is like thirty-one years in arrears, as far as if we're looking at today's calendar. I suspect at some point, and I understand the legislation is chapter forty-one, section eighty-one D, planning board owns the master plan. So, I wouldn't advise that we want to look at this thing as a whole, but maybe some small bites coming down the road when we have opportunity to do so.
Well, Man, it's good that you brought that up, you know, because that plan is old, and it is responsibility of the planning board to do a master plan. I think maybe in the next year, we could have some discussions about doing a master plan. The town would have to hire someone to do it, obviously. They, they go up over a hundred thousand dollars in most cases for a full master plan, so it's an expensive undertaking.
So it's an expensive undertaking. There is some grant money available that we could access to lower the town's cost. So we could have some discussions about that during the next year and see if the board has interest in, in really pushing it forward.
And typically, don't you have, in the past, I think that what they've done is had ad hoc committees where you might have one or two members from the planning board sit on the committee and one or two members from the Board of Selectmen and all the other town sections get involved. So that way there, everybody has a say.
To, to Mr. Horn's point, this is indicated prepared for the Dudley Planning Board by the Dudley Master Plan Committee. So apparently there was some kind of group effort apart from the planning board. I'm sure the planning board members participated.
Very long ago.
What's that?
Very long ago, I was, I was on that committee. Bill, I.
Oh, well, there's relief in sight. We have Mr. Wetrova's past experience to rely upon. This should be a breeze. A hundred thousand dollars saved immediately.
Hey, let's election. I, I was going to ask a question about the, you mentioned economic development. And this marijuana overlay district article that was defeated at the last town meeting, I know that was brought to us by a citizen. And my first question is, if the planning board was so inclined in the interest of economic development, could we present our own article for a marijuana overlay district without having any necessarily, without necessarily having any specific property in mind? Just an article to create the district? And then if it passes, applicants could come forward and if they meet the criteria?
Yes.
Okay. So my next question would be, would, would that article be so different that it would have nothing to do with this article? Would it be a completely new article or would we have to wait? Because don't we have to wait two years?
Well, the rule is that if the planning board recommends adoption of the article, you do not have to wait two years to bring it back.
And we did recommend it?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, so, so we could amend this article and bring it back in the fall?
Yes.
If we so chose that it would be a good thing to let the farmers of Dudley in on the cash cow that marijuana is quickly becoming in town?
It was interesting, no one really stood up to support the article from the public. So, you know, it kind of surprised me. I think.
When I was looking at those totals every time a vote was taken, we were around sixty-five, seventy total votes there. And as we always say, unfortunately, not a real true representation necessarily of the town.
Do, do we know what the actual vote count was?
Yes. I don't have it with me.
It was a simple majority, but we needed a two-thirds, correct?
I want to say it was something like thirty-four, twenty-seven, or it, it was something like that. Thirty-six, twenty-eight. It was some kind of right in that ballpark there. Because I mean, everything else passed with seventy-one to one, you know, seventy-two, seventy, sixty-nine to three or something. That was really one of the few that had.
The only other one was the Schofield there that went down too.
Yep. And they were both similar vote wise. It was both mid-thirties to mid-twenty's.
Personally, I'm thinking to myself, I, I understand if you vote against it on principle because you're, you're, you're against it. But that same crowd of people voted to approve more liquor licenses in town. So think about that.
Any other comments from the planning board?
I guess maybe I would suggest we develop a work program for next year. If you want, I could put my thoughts together about things the board would want to work on. Zoning articles being an important one. We could reconsider the self-storage service.
Oh, that's right.
Facilities.
Yes, yes, yes.
And have discussions about the master plan and, you know, whatever other ideas.
I think the complete streets out there, it's still hanging in the bands.
Subdivision regs.
Do think that, you know, with these additional apartments coming on, the issue with regards to self-storage, I think we need to get ahead of that one.
Why did that get shut down? Do we know?
Town council recommended that we not go forward with it because of the way it was worded, it would have applied to all industrial districts. In which case there was no need for an overlay district. You just could have amended the bylaws included in all of the districts.
And why didn't we not want to do that?
Because we have residential subdivisions built in industrial areas because they were allowed previously. And we wanted to give the people who live in those industrial subdivisions the chance to say if they want that in their neighborhood or not.
Yeah. Well, the master plan thing screwed things up. We should avoid those.
Who was on that board again?
It was a committee, it was a committee.
I think the only thing I was going to say, what Mr. Clark pointed out very right so is the complete streets. I mean, do you think that we should, somebody from this board or maybe all of us should ask for a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen? Or maybe we could just attend a Board of Selectmen meeting, get on their schedule and let them know that once this is approved, that there's, I believe it's four hundred thousand dollars per year for four years. So there's one point six million dollars worth of money that we could receive from the state to improve sidewalks and infrastructure in the town of Dudley, but we need to foot the bill of the engineering. And my thought was with all of these cannabis things happening in town and all this additional income coming for the town, that maybe they could take some of that. Because I'm guessing out of a one point six million, you know, if you, if you had a budget for one point six million dollars to do a, a town project, I go to imagine that thirty percent of that's going to be engineering costs.
That's high, but.
Twenty, twenty-five to thirty percent?
Fifteen, maybe.
Okay. So we, maybe we need to let them know that we're going to need two or three hundred thousand dollars down the road to get this one point six million dollars worth of infrastructure.
Speaking of complete streets, have you guys noticed that sign at the end of Mason Road, right near the fire station? Warning people that they're getting ready to dig up the water lines? And when I saw that, the first thing I thought was, oh, wow. So you're going to dig up the streets, put the water lines in. And that's going to mean repaving. Wouldn't it have been nice if they could coincide that with new sidewalks?
To, to Mr. Horn's point, I think part of the host agreements, isn't it some of that money supposed to be earmarked for public safety?
Well, there's community impact fee. That's, that's collective.
Okay. Is that earmarked for public safety or?
Well, it's not earmarked.
It's not earmarked.
It's supposed to be the general fund, doesn't it?
Um, well, it's supposed to be used to mitigate the impacts of the facility. That's what an impact fee is.
Okay. No, I just meant the three percent that come in.
Excuse me?
Three percent from the, from the retail facility or the growth facility, that is, that money just goes into the, from the host agreement, it goes into the general fund.
Correct.
Okay. All right. No comments from the audience? Next meeting? Twenty-third?
After the election, June fourteenth.
Any vouchers that we need to approve?
Yes. There are two.
I, Mr. Chairman, if it's not out of order, I'm going to defer on that reimbursement as I found that one. It was like trying to drink from a fire hose in terms of the information that was available. And I did manage, and I think I have copied some of the files and some of the things that were presented. So if someone had interest in them, I think I could try to send them to you electronically. I wouldn't dare presume to try to print them out. It was very detailed, very informative, and I think it was worth the twenty dollars to me. And as a bonus, I now have a PayPal account.
Was that next meeting date the twenty-third of July?
June.
June.
Does it say July?
No.
Okay, sorry.
It's wishful thinking, Mr. Wetrova's point.
You know, I do encourage the board members to attend those workshops. They're very valuable. And there was a fee involved and I'm happy to reimburse you for those expenses. So I did prepare a voucher for twenty dollars to reimburse Richard for his cost. Are you saying to shell this or would you still like the twenty dollars?
No, I could put that in the general fund. We can.
Okay. So then we have one voucher.
Buy a tree with it.
This is to return the remaining funds in escrow for Butler's Way, which has been withdrawn.
Yep.
So there's no need to keep the funds in escrow. There's currently one thousand eight hundred forty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. And then whatever interest might accrue from that date until the check is actually cut.
Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we return the escrow account for Butler's Way. And the account number is, I'll, I'll dispense with the reading of the account number. But in the total of one thousand eight hundred forty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents plus the accrued interest determined by the town accountant.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Any town notices or correspondences that we need to be aware of?
No.
All right. Then we can adjourn.
The chairman make a motion that we adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.
What do we do? The third period, Ben? Probably over. Well, I'll tell you.